Okay, call the meeting to order, we'll stand for the pledge. Stevens.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to all, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda? Second thing. Discussion, any, any questions, all those in favor, signify the saying, aye. Pose na, I have it, declare the motion adopted. Okay. There you go.
Well, thank you.
I'm sorry, Kim Crowell is here with us in person, Howard Sufer is here via Zoom. They represent Bowes Rice, and we are, or an item number from the last one, but.
Three.
Three, professional development, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, thank you, thank you, Mr. Murphy, and thank you, Board of Education members, as you all have experienced over the last few years, professional development has been provided to the board on a series of these one hour, one hour and fifteen minute exercises regarding different things that Boards of Education face. You'll recall the parliamentary procedure one, I think that was the last one. And this one is also one that was developed by Howard O'Call, you all will recall Dr. O'Call as the executive director of the School Board Association, and he called this a baker's dozen for school boards. And it's a very interactive process, I have in front of me thirteen baker's dozen envelopes, and as Howard would say, Howard Sufer or Howard O'Call would say, the rules of engagement for this evening are that you will select an envelope, and before looking at the question on the envelope, you will direct another board member to answer that question, and there's no right or wrong answer in any of these. So put your thinking caps on, and so that board member will answer the question. The board will have the opportunity to respond, superintendent will then respond, and then Howard or I will give the legal basis for what you should do in that situation if there are any questions or concerns, so this is meant to be for you all to ask questions, to learn, whatever you want to, as we go through these, they run the gamut of questions that we hear from Boards of Education frequently. And so with that, Howard, I don't know if you have anything that you'd like to add before we begin?
Not really, I can't see anybody, but I assume you're all there.
Well, we all look fabulous this evening, so we're here. I'm not quite sure where the camera is with. Oh, okay, there's not one for the TV, I understand. Well, we will begin, and I will start, Michael, I'm gonna start with you, and I'm gonna go right down the road, so you, who is going to answer this question of your fellow board members? Okay. To the victor go the spoils. There we go, okay. And let me, let me say that everybody has to answer before we go back, so Jackie, you'll be the next one to pick, but you can't pick Pat until everybody, so.
So.
So go ahead, drum roll, please.
How, it's like the one, nevermind. How should a county board go about investigating issues regarding school personnel matters or other matters? What if a school board member suspects inappropriate conduct such as child abuse or neglect?
It's two-part question, one, we're not supposed to investigate because we may have to sit in adjudication, I guess would be the word, for jury. And the second part is, we suspect child abuse, we have to, we're mandatory reporters, so I think we reported to a caseworker with Department of the, well, they've split it, but DHHR's predecessor or successor.
Any discussion by board members? Does that sound about right?
That's very good, I think that's very good. I'll listen to it. I'll add one caveat to that, you know, we are mandatory reporters, and we do, we are responsible, you would be responsible for making the referral to to the agency that used to be DHHR, it's DO, what is it now, Department of Human, so DOHS, is that, okay. So you would be required to make that phone call, but also, you know, we are required to contact law enforcement. So local and state, so on each of those, and as mandated reporters, that's part of what our training is, so.
And that's correct, if there are instances of sexual abuse or suspected sexual abuse, any sort of physical injury associated with that, there is that extra step for calling the state police and the local jurisdiction of law enforcement, I will tell you that the prosecuting attorney Katie Delagati is very involved in that, and is working to try to coordinate their services so that a call to dispatch or something will get to everybody to protect the students that are involved in that.
If, if a child tells you their, say, mother is being abused, do you this is not, I mean, the child's in the environment, so do you still go with the report? Thanks.
I, I would, because the child, and how DHHR looks at that is the child is being subjected to an environment with abuse occurring there, and I, my opinion on all of mandatory reporting with abuse and neglect is I would much rather be on the side of wrong and report something, and it turns out to be nothing, than to be on the side of making that decision myself and thinking, oh, that couldn't happen, and not reporting it, and then something happened, because too many times, you know, we turn on the news or read the paper and you see some horrific action that has occurred, so.
I did have another question, so.
Yes.
Along with all those, should we also notify boarding and board office as well? Like if I see something happening at school, of course, I do all the others, but also letting them know as well, or should we?
I believe that if you see something happen at school, and it's an employee that's engaged in that, or even students that happens at school, and you've made your notifications, I would notify the superintendent as well, and that kind of goes into that first part of the question. You know, how should a board go about investigating something? You know, certainly you can't be the investigator, as Pat points out, but I, I don't think that means you sweep it under the rug and say, oh, I can't do anything, I'm a board member. I think you have to report that, because it needs to be investigated, and if you see something like that that has prompted you to call Child Protective Services, that employee will likely be placed immediately on leave so that they're no longer around children or in that situation. There may be other things, if it happens in a special education classroom, they'll need to make sure that they've secured all the video footage and, and look at that, or hallway footage wherever it occurred. So those are other reasons that you would wanna let someone know that, too. With me. Howard, yes?
Just a few points here. It is true that in addition to notifying Child Protective Services, we have to notify the state police and any police agency that has jurisdiction over where this supposedly is suspected to have occurred, but that report to police, as Kim says, is only mandatory in the event of suspicion that a child has suffered serious physical abuse or sexual abuse, or sexual assault. So while it never hurts to over-report the mandatory duty to also report to law enforcement is only invoked when we have serious physical abuse, sexual abuse, or sexual assault that's suspected. Two other points, the question was asked about, do we also notify someone in the school system? There is a requirement that if you're a mandatory reporter that you have to notify or give a report to the person in charge of the facility of the school system where this is suspected to have occurred, if it's suspected to have occurred at school, it's if any person required to report who's a member or staff, volunteer of a public or private school that provides organized activities for children shall immediately notify the person in charge of the institution, the school, or the entity that provides those activities. So it would be wise if your suspicion is that a child was abused at school to notify the school superintendent and the school principal, that would cover all of those bases. And finally, there's a, it used to be, and some people think it's still the case, that you don't have to call your human services yourself, Child Protective Services, if you instead report it to the superintendent or to the principal of the school, and it used to be employees could do that, instead of themselves calling DHHR, they could go to the principal and say, I suspect this is happening, and then the principal had the duty, and the employee no longer did. The legislature took that out of the law several years ago. So now all mandatory reporters are obligated to directly report to Child Protective Services, to law enforcement in cases where that's warranted, and in the event it's suspected that this occurred at school, to the principal of the school, and I would say the superintendent as well.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to follow, maybe not a sexual allegation or something, but something inappropriate, and my concern is we have employees on administrative leave for prolonged periods of time, and with the superintendent who's in charge of personnel assignments, have the discretion to assign that person to a non-student environment and get labor out of them, yeah, instead of having them sit around and it's rough on employees under the cloud of suspicion who may be innocent, and it might be beneficial to both the system and the employee to work in somewhere else, it's, does the superintendent have that ability?
The, this, the law was recently changed, eighteen eighty-eight, that allows a board to suspend and otherwise discipline an employee, was changed to write that into the law, what you've just suggested, that in lieu of putting them out, the superintendent can place them in a position where they do not have contact with students and wouldn't be in a harmful situation, and I think that there's a it's a fine line about where you put someone in a school system, because almost everything you do has some sort of contact with students, and some jobs that people have you know, are difficult to do if they, I mean, they're not qualified under the eyes of the law to do other jobs necessarily, so you know, and Howard, I would ask you to join in, but I take the, let's say there was a bus driver who did something inappropriate and we put the bus driver off, well, that bus driver's not qualified to come in and be a custodian in the central office, right? They're not qualified under the law to do some of those other jobs, now, some employees that you have may be, and there may be positions that we could find for them that would allow them to not have a free vacation while they're, while they're being investigated. Howard, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, the, the standard is if they're being investigated for something that could harm a child or harm the education process, they, they must be placed on paid or unpaid suspension, or placed or assigned duties that quote, "do not involve direct interaction with pupils," quote. And I think there are probably some opportunities to do that in limited spaces in the school system, for example, if a bus operator was being investigated, see whether they're guilty or not of some offense, instead of suspending them with or without pay, I suppose there there may be some back office at the bus garage where you know, somebody's gonna be working on a project to assemble information about our bus routes or whatever, statistical work or reporting work or reviewing records where they could go in and close the door and work, and I don't imagine many kids end up in the bus garage or wherever the bus system is is managed. It would have to be something that restricted, I think, because God forbid that something intentionally or unintentionally happens to a child while a person who's under investigation is holding, having duties that we hoped, we believed would involve no direct interaction with students, and they somehow either purposely or just by accident hurt a kid, you know? They were in that back room in the transportation building, but at lunchtime they ran over to the school cafeteria and were in direct contact with students, so I think it can be done, it's rarely done, but it could be done, and the grievance board and the courts have said that there's no obligation to do that. And typically, when the law empowers a school board to do something but doesn't require it, in other words, the board has, or the superintendent has discretion to do something, then if it's challenged, have to be shown that the discretion was exercised reasonably and in the best interest of the schools. And for that reason, I think the courts and the grievance board defer to the schools, school districts' choice of whether to suspend the person or to put them to work where they don't have direct interaction with students.
We have done that here many, many years ago, I think Justin remembers, person staying in position forever. But it worked, and it can work.
All right, next question. Jackie? Pick a card. All right, who are you going to ask?
I'll ask Melissa.
I know, she, you know what, Davidson, don't look at Jackie.
Don't need to contact.
I got that.
Okay, how and when can information be shared among board members? Part one, what should they be wary of? Is there any such thing as too much information? That's a three-part.
It is, so you have to be mindful of the Open Meetings Act. And you do not want to have discussions with more than one other board member at a time. I would even dare say that you don't wanna go from board member to board member to board member, because that can also be relaying and, relaying information as well as having a conversation amongst several board members at the same time, so you shouldn't, and you should not be talking about things that are gonna be coming up in votes potentially when you are in a group setting. If we are out to dinner, we're talking about our kids and our families and what we're doing on vacation, we're not talking about anything board-related or anything school-related. So those are, I think, did I hit all of those, did I hit all the questions?
Oh, what should they be wary of, and is there such a thing as too much information?
There is such thing as too much information, yeah, yeah. I mean, you can share pertinent details, like if I come across something, for, for one thing, I might wanna just share it with, with Jackie. I'm not sharing it with everybody else. What Jackie does with that is up to her, I'm not going to tell her anything.
Where are you gonna make for?
No, I was just looking. You said she was, no, the last time you read another part of the sentence, I was wondering if there was more.
Superintendent Stevens, how would you respond to that?
Um, I, I agree with Melissa, I would add to that, you know, the part, is there too much information, when is too much information, too much information? We have to keep in mind that, and I think Pat said something about this earlier. You may at any point be asked to sit in on something as a judicial body. And too much information would affect your ability to be able to, to, to have input in that, so. That would be my input.
Howard?
You know, so far you are, have straight A's. Two out of two questions, they've been like textbook answers. A little footnote I would put here, and this is something we don't often think about. Just because we're a school superintendent or school board members doesn't mean that we are allowed to discuss or even be privy to just any information at all that exists within the school district. Give you a few examples, under the Family Educational Right and Privacy Act, FERPA, the school system itself is prohibited from divulging personally identifiable information about students without certain exceptions, like parental written permission to anybody that doesn't have a need to know. So for example, we take, we train teachers that you can't go down to the teacher's lounge on your break and go in there and say, I can't believe what that super kid just did in my classroom, to just, just because there's other teachers in the room doesn't make it right. And there are things that, depending on a person's job, or in the case of board members, their their position in the school system, there are some things that they don't have a need to know. And if there isn't a need to know, then it violates federal law to divulge it, and in the case of board members to discuss it. So I'd always be mindful that when we're thinking about, talking about student information, that it's one thing to be talking about something that was in the news yesterday that happened with the student in the school system that is out in the press and everybody knows about. But it may be another thing that if a board member happens to know that a particular teacher had an interaction with the student, or the student failed a test or didn't come to school, or just any, any information we have about a student that that, that doesn't concern what you're doing, then we wanna be careful, and you know, it isn't like when you say had a red flag goes off or cannon goes off and you get caught, it's later when somebody finds out that that happened and they wish to make an issue of it, and they can report it to the Federal Department of Education or the State Department of Education as a FERPA violation. The mention of court proceedings, juvenile court proceedings, for example, are very carefully protected under the laws. And if for some reason as a school board member you appeared at one of those, or talked to somebody who did, you wanna be very careful about sharing that information, even with your fellow board members, except in the few circumstances where that's permissible. Then there are a bunch of small laws that protect really specific types of information, like we have a whole section of the West Virginia Code that protects the information about people being HIV positive, if we happen to have that information as part of their health record or something that they have told us. That is strictly protected, and, and just the mere mention of it to somebody who doesn't have a need to know can be a violation of that law and could create real problems, so there are some types of information. It's kinda like at the, at the government level, there are certain types of information that United States senators and congressmen get that belong to our intelligence committees about, you know, national security things that go on, that they discuss in their in their meetings when they have a reason to do that, but they can't go out and share that information at home or with other congressmen or senators, just because they also are congressmen and senators. So it doesn't happen very often, but the, the, the main area there would be information about students, personally identifiable information about students.
One, one area, two, two areas that this question brings up. I've, as you know, I'm active in the state organization and, and I've talked to people, probably improperly, but anyway. But, and not our present superintendent, but I, I've been approached before by the superintendent, how do you feel about this, taking a a strong vote and calling up other board members, trying, you know, if it's gonna be opposition, maybe massaging whatever the proposal is, that's one area that I think also applies to this area, the question was board member to board member, but you also have the superintendent has to be careful that he's not doing something with the board. Another area, I'm trying to remember what it is now, but no, we get a lot of texts from employees, and, and I'll just, won't go into any details, other than I had a text from an employee wanting to schedule a hearing, and I but then I saw a long text, so I stopped right there, and I told the employee, I cannot read your letter because I have to go into a hearing as you're asking, and I have to be in an impartial frame of mind. So I just texted the employee and told him that, and told him to contact their union rep or their lawyer, if they didn't have a union rep, and that other people would schedule the hearing, but if you see a long text and you start reading the first paragraph and you see that they're giving you their side of the story, you have to stop reading it. Because when you sit there at the table, they can summon your texts, and they can also say, even though you read the thing and still went into the hearing impartially in your mind, whatever, however you vote could be challenged by one side or the other.
That's exactly right, exactly, very good points.
I think we all, even when people call us, yes, well, you need to be mindful that if you go in so far into this, I'll have to stop you and cut you off because this could go into something that I don't wanna be biased over and cannot hear, so. I think we've all had that.
And a lot of employees listen to these meetings, so I'm just doing it for their benefit.
Well, good, that's good, good preventive medicine there, it's for their own protection, it really is.
Yeah, they might have a vote in you and they jeopardize their positive vote. They usually approach the ones they think they might have a chance of having, and by that very action, they, they neutralize a possible.
Exactly.
It's jury tampering, unfortunately.
That's right.
Unknown jury.
Unknown, yes, and, and no, and there's no, no ill will of, of any, of any of our staff, I, I think they all want us to be informed, and we, we wanna be informed, but to do it to the detriment of us not being able to say that we have an unbiased opinion or view, that's, it's, it gets hard.
Right, and, and they don't under, I think people don't understand largely the role that the board plays in that situation, because a board is accessible to folks, and they come before there's an issue or a problem, and sometimes I think people don't understand where the line is on something like that, particularly if they've had, if they know you, I mean, it could be your neighbor that you've known for twenty-five years, and they don't understand that they can't do that, so. Mr. Murphy?
Trying to think of who's made my life miserable.
Well, we're gonna find out, aren't we, and about, no, you can't look at it, you have to pick the person first.
I'm gonna pick one, Jackie.
Okay.
Glasses on, yeah. This is appropriate. Define micromanaging. What are some things which lead to micromanaging? Think of all the times you killed somebody like this. I think, I think I got two.
Oh, did you get two?
No.
Oh, no, that, no, that came.
Okay.
That would be kind of the superintendent, how to do his job, and, and more other staff members. Now, suggesting might be okay, but.
That's micro.
Yeah, well. What's micro?
She calls him a micro.
Micro suggesting.
Who to fire, who to hire, that's not our job, but their job, they work for, and not us. Things of that nature.
Mr. Superintendent?
I, I think those are all good examples. You know, micromanaging is
running your staff.
It's it's a term that gets a negative connotation, and it usually means, usually means meddling, you know, when somebody is you know, trying to influence or not, not trusting the people to do the, the jobs that they were hired to do. Those would be examples for me of micromanaging, and the, the problems that it can cause. It causes circumvention, people want to instead of following the chain of command, they wanna go to whoever will listen to them, you know, in their eyes, anyway, to be able to move move that needle a little bit in their favor. So it's almost, I always felt like this was going to mom when dad says no, or to dad, mom says no. Just trying to manipulate is what that's about.
It could also mean going into a classroom, if we're, if we're pouring a school, we can't go into a classroom And direct that teacher on how to do something. Or that principal. Or any staff member have to be mindful that. They've got their lesson planned. They, they've graduated college. And they, they've worked with their, with, with their building and their, their principal and in what they're doing in their classroom. And so. We're just observers.
I think it's really hard for a board that, and this board is very active. The, you know, in, in the community that are, you know, radio and schools and are, you know. Wanting to be. Right in the forefront where everybody can, can see and wanting to make a difference. I think that that makes it very difficult. I think it's difficult on a lot of you because, you know, that mentioned the text messages and I'm sure you get phone calls, emails, letters. I'm sure there's people still writing letters, uh, some of them are unsigned letters that, that we all receive. But I think that it, it makes it difficult when. You're. So recognized in the community. It, it's difficult to say, you gotta follow the chain of command. I can tell you who to talk to, but I can't, I can't help you with any of that.
Well, we, we want to be accessible, but we don't want to supersede what we're supposed to do. Remember our roles as board member.
I think we do a good job policing ourselves a lot.
Or policing each other.
Yeah, policing each other, you know, making sure that we get. David Damon over here does a good job of saying, hey, timeout, you know. He's, he's good at that and I, and I thank him for it because there are times where we can all get taken away with the story or whatever. We have to be careful. So we remind each other a lot. And, and we can remain, but you know, it's possible. I think there's a balance just to, you know, super, superintendent to his point. Um, you know. It's a balance.
I must steal, I must steal Howard's thunder before he reminds himself of. His, his, uh, exercise up in Morgantown, go out on the, out on the terrace. And point out somebody and, and, uh. As individuals, we are powerless. And, um. You can't have five people walking around to all the departments in this building or helping the schools and telling people, you gotta do this. We have to, as a board, by, uh, by a majority vote. Vote on do something if it, it, you have to be careful that that's appropriate. Uh, we do things. The only person we can tell to do something as five is the superintendent. So when, so when, uh. I'll ask a department head a question. And I can't tell them, you have to do a change your way. It, and even if I, all five of us agree to it. We can't say that individual, we have to go through the superintendent and he has, and he's been. Put in the position to follow out the order and if he objects because it's illegal, he'll tell us that. But, uh, we, we, we would have chaos if you had five board members running around in this community. Telling individuals, I'm a board member and I want you to do this. We can't do this.
You know, it, it's interesting because I think that sometimes. You, you don't recognize the stature. That you really have because when, you know, when you go in, there should be no difference with any of you walking into a school as the man on the street. That's exactly what it should be. But you're, you're so known in the community and in the school community. That when a board member. Walks into the school, it's a really big deal. I mean, it's a big deal for. The teachers and the students and, and the administrators in that school because you're, you're important people to them and they really see that and. Um, you know, when, when you say something. They take it differently than if, you know, the mom comes in off the street and although it shouldn't be that way. You know, that's the way it is. It's the, you know, just the rules. So I think that means. That you have to be that. Much more careful in there. Because, you know, you could say, oh, great job, you know, great job, Sally, teacher, teacher Sally. All of a sudden Sally's on an improvement plan and example, well, the board member said, I was doing a great job, um, you know, but, but. People really, um, you know, they, they give. Lots and lots of weight because I don't think they recognize that. You know, you have no more power individually than the man on the street. That's a good point. Howard, what would you add?
You know, we, we use the term micromanagement all the time and we, we. Basically understand what it is. I liked, in thinking of the role of the board, to think of the opposite macro management. And I think while that too is susceptible to a bunch of different definitions, we all kind of understand that. You know, macro is large scale. It's the whole of something rather than its parts. It's, uh, you know, standing back from something and. Taking it all in. And if you think of the board's role as being a micro manager. As opposed to a, I mean, a, a macro manager as opposed to a micro manager. We're talking about people who step back and trust their team to do the work. Rather than closely monitoring and telling the team how to do, take every step of what it is we expect them to do. So while neither term really fits what we're talking about, I like the contrast between. A board member or a board as a micro manager and a board as a macro manager.
Well, Damon. You and Melissa don't have a whole lot of choices, so we'll start there again. I love who you pick.
Who you pick for this. Oh, yeah. Yes, it's gonna be mine.
Dr. Phil, the TV pop psychologist says, if you take care of your people, I will take care of mine. He's referring to in-laws. Apply Dr. Phil's logic to a county board situation. Who is responsible, responsible for county board member behavior and explain your response.
County board member behavior.
Yes.
I mean, it's a very general question. It, it really depends on the situation. And. A lot of times we are a collective board. And we have to look at each thing individually. So I'll be geared towards the superintendent to. Steer us in the right direction as well as in collaboration with the board president. To get initiatives that individual board members want to see, uh, say on the agenda. Let's keep. Are they? Are they talking about like? External or? They don't say.
It's just a very, it's a very.
Have you ever seen, have you ever seen Dr. Phil? Have you ever seen Dr. Phil? Okay, so basic, okay, so to give you context.
Where was Dr. Phil interpreter?
Yeah, I love Dr. Phil. So to, to put it into context, this is going towards people. Who, like, you have an in-law that's coming into your home and telling you exactly how to run things. And that your behavior is bad and your behavior is wrong and we need to do this, we need to do that. It's the micromanaging piece, but also you're not in your lane. And boundaries.
I don't know, it's like, I don't know, it's, it ain't a question saying that you get your first under control.
Behavior.
Behavior.
County board member, who is responsible for county board member behavior? Sorry, I did boundary issues on that. I should. No, this is the discussion for all.
It's, it's very obvious.
Yes, yes.
Well, I mean, he works for us, so I don't know how he can control us and it's very difficult, is it not?
It is, it is true.
So, but he can give us, um. His opinion on. Like, you all need to rein it in a little bit or something of that nature. But I would think as board members. I mean, each. Uh, or a board president or any of us that. Beyond that, would it be the, um. Uh, what, the school board association? Person in charge? Or even if it got even worse, I'm going to probably even hurting.
Well, I think, you know.
I wouldn't want to go there.
Yeah. All, all, you're, in, in my experience, your board is so enjoyable because there are situations where you may disagree with one another. But you're not just disagreeable toward each other and some boards are. And they, you know, will have people who are. You know, outliers and they are instigators of things and. Successful boards will. Take care of their own and they'll say, you know, Michael, you've been a real, um. Instigator of something in the community. We need you to stop doing that. We're a board here and we act as a board. And I think that, that. And, and this is sort of a, a classic Dr. O'Call, um, question in that because. That's what I think he always tried to emphasize that, you know, as a board. You control the way that you deal with issues and that the way that you deal with controversy and the way that you deal with problems. And then the school, the way that the school system, everybody's watching you reacts to that. Really defines whether you have a, a ship that sails smoothly or one that, you know, was constantly in turmoil. Howard, what would, what would you add to that?
Well, um, I, I, I agree with everything that's been said. It, it's a difficult situation, um. In other, in some other counties and. It, it often arises from. Uh, the board members themselves or the administration are both just being a little, um, concerned. About the behavior of one of the board members, things they're saying out in public, that the public mistakes as being. The board's position. Or talking about things that were discussed in executive session that the rest of the board understands probably shouldn't be discussed in public. Or at a board meeting, um. Saying intemperate things or taking more, more than their share of time to. To beat on the drum of their issues. And. I, I think that it's unfair to expect a superintendent to corral that type of behavior or persuade the board member. To change their ways. Um, and, and, and I'm not sure anybody can in some cases, but to the extent it can be done, especially if. Some of what the board member is doing, they don't recognize as affecting the system as a whole or being inappropriate. I think it really falls to other members of the board who are concerned about. The board, what the public thinks of the board as an institution. And how the board, the public interprets, uh, the board's work and how the school community receives it. And when that sort of behavior. Um, and some of it violates the open meetings law, when that occurs. I think it takes courage in many cases, depending on the strength of the personality of the person that. It's usually one or two people. That concerns the other board members, but I think, uh. Usually board members don't do a thing. But if anything is to be done, I think it probably can come from the. The other board members, either individually or as a group. Uh, to approach a board member. Outside of a board meeting or an executive session about their behavior at the board, as long as it isn't talking about issues that come before the board, doesn't violate the open meetings law. Uh, because you're talking about their behavior, um. The board is an institution. You're not talking about anything that's going to come before the board for decision and you shouldn't. You shouldn't be, you know. Two, two of you shouldn't be meeting with the third member and chastising them for their views about some issue that's going to come before the board. It's rather the manner in which they do things. Uh, sometimes it's an educational process. Sometimes it's a, you know, let's all. Kind of pull in our, our wings a little bit for the good of the whole. It's not always successful. I think of those, uh, what's it called? When everybody in the family gets together to confront a family member that. Has an addiction or.
Intervention, yes.
An intervention, yeah. I'm not sure even that would work, but. Depending upon what respect the, uh, errant board member has for. The other members of the board that could blow up. And make things worse. Um, or it might help things along, but it is a dip, you know, I was thinking of this just last weekend. There's a nice article in the current, um. Uh, edition of the American Association of School Administrators Magazine, which is online. And it addresses that issue. How do board members and how does a superintendent deal with the? The concerning behavior of a member of the board? And every article you read about that says all the same things. And they all concede in the end that they probably won't work. But if anything will, I think it's probably, um, I mean, all of us want to belong or most of us want to belong. And I think, um, to the extent you can make it an honor. And a privilege to belong to the Board of Education. In the minds of somebody who maybe doesn't understand that they're detracting from that, I think you got your best shot.
Damon, don't make eye contact.
I'm going to choose you anyway. How can the county board know? And know as it quotes. How can the county board know what information? Provided by the county superintendent is accurate or best as the basis for decision making?
Well, if I have a lot of the birdies around, so they. Um, I think, um, one is, you have to. You have to trust that what is said is, is correct. Uh, but in many cases, what I've found is that. Especially if something is said in a board meeting, uh, or said on the radio, whatever it is. Uh, someone will end up contacting one of us saying, this was not. Totally correct. They may have bespoke, whatever it may be, here's the actual information or here's, or here's what I'm actually experiencing that's actually different. That they may not know about. So there's, there's all, always ways to find out, um. If it's financial information, we can talk to the treasurer, HR information, talk to HR. That's the way that I found, that's to make sure that we said, I could, those who, those that are in charge of maintaining information. Instead.
And if we misspoke, trust me, you hear about.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
You know, somebody will tell you, you said this wrong, not that. You said. And I said, what did he mean to say at that first? I still was misspoken and happened. I straightened out some lines, so.
I, I. First. I tell people, what you tell me is incompetence. And, um. And then if they miss, if they tell me something wrong, I, I don't seek out their. Input or when they offer that is. I, I heard you and that's it. But, um, but I will not. Uh, in the past, uh, Mr. Stevens, he's still operating, so he didn't even ask. But, uh, but I've had people ask, well, who told you that? And I said, that's not. I'm not going to tell you. Because I want people to do it. And if I talk to a board member and they say, well, do you know about this? I heard this. And I, I don't ask. Who their source was. Because they have to develop. A, a bit of trust. Now, the same thing, you need to be able to trust the administration. I, I'm reading Louis Brandeis right now and one of his criticisms is the problem of bigness. And sometimes I, I just think. They're always talking about trying to consolidate small counties. Mr. Dilly and I were talking about, uh. Bigness or, or, or small counties, but sometimes I think. You can have as many problems being too big. As you have problems with, uh, efficiency and being too small. And, and so. Was, I, I view Berkeley County as four different school systems because of our feeder system and everything to a degree. Um, but. But, uh. Just one point on the previous question. I think you have to be. I, I'm not going to go into my own personal history as a board member here, but I think. You as a leader. As a president. And I don't even like being called that. But I, as a leader, have to say, well. If you're out there where the, where the rosebuds are. Bless you. We'll just vote you down. But be respectful and I think you, it, it may be more detrimental. Now, I, I recognize some of the things Howard was talking about. Somebody who's like me talking too much and something like that, but I, I think you have to give each member. Equal feelings of equal power and authority because. Each of us, as I told them on the first day we met, we each represent four thousand students. Thirty-some thousand voters. And so we're all sitting up there. Equal in power. My vote doesn't count more than Damon's vote. And so. Let's debate it. If, if we do it, I've asked him, if you want something on the agenda, please let me know. And, um. If if we do it, I've asked him, if you want something on the agenda, please let me know. And um. We will. Hear each other out and vote it up or vote it down and move on. But the leadership has to show respect two ways. The leadership can't. Show dominance over any member because none of us have that dominance. We can try to intimidate. Or force people, but if we're gonna be a functioning board, we have to be a respectful board with each other. And that and and we have to respect each other's sources of information. We have to. We have to get out there and and. And not investigate. But be in accessible positions and understand what the system's trying to do. And you don't learn what the system's doing with a dog and pony show at this meeting. You have to get out there and see.
Superintendent Stevens.
Um, I I believe. Can you read the question again, please?
How can the county board know information provided by the county superintendent is accurate? Or best as the basis for decision making?
That is a a question of trust. Um, short of looking up the information yourselves and and knowing. What what the correct answer is, um, you know, I don't know everything and for me to have to. Um, present information from our HR department, our finance department, as we mentioned before. Um, you you've got to work with the people that are in those roles and you've got to have some trust and. You know, and trust is something that's built o- over time, so. I think it's the same. For for the board, and I think that you were. As a group, you were talking about how how we trust each other, you know, we have, you were talking about having equal. Equal power. I just, I think that it is a question of trust. On that particular thing. Um, and I will say that, you know, what. What Damon was saying about being able to ask questions, uh, I think that's extremely important. Um. And I would like to think. That if there's a question of something that I've said or have misspoken as. Maybe I've misspoken or maybe I've been misinterpreted, as Jackie alluded to earlier. I would like to think that. Somebody would ask me first before circling around and talking to everybody. Before it comes back. Um, at least I'd like to think that's the way I handle things too.
Howard, what are your thoughts?
You know, um. Sure, this is true of every line of work, but as lawyers. When we're heading into a hearing. On behalf of a school board or in a school matter. We try to think of everything that could come up at that hearing. And if it's important, and almost every hearing is, it's a nuclear event in somebody's life. Uh, we wanna, we wanna have an answer to it. So we do a lot of preparation work most of the time. And then get to the hearing and the opposing counsel or the judge, nobody else asks a question about what it is that we did all that work for. Like I stayed up all night or spent all weekend getting ready for this and doing the research and coming up with arguments. Before the Supreme Court, they never asked me a question about something. And it's like, would you please ask me a question so I can? Share with you all this hard work that I did. And. I think that sometimes, um. Superintendents, now they're busy and they don't have time to take a whole weekend usually to. For something, but they put a lot of work into developing information that goes into. Important recommendations to the board. And um, I think sometimes the the most direct route is is not around, but right through. Ask the superintendent. You know, what you're saying, I don't know anything about what you're saying, but um, can you explain to me a little bit, um, exactly why you say this has to be done? Or you said that, you know, attendance is a real problem in this school or. We got, you know, we need to invest money in maintenance. What do you mean by that? And what examples? You gave us an example. How do you know that that's the case? I think you can respectfully ask questions without sounding like you 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 have lost. Faith in an administrator. And and sometimes they're just aching to tell you. They've got it all there and uh. And they they go home thinking, oh, my gosh, nobody ever asked me about the thing I was all set to help them with. And if they don't have the answer right away, oftentimes they can dig it up and bring it to you. So um, I wouldn't see the this question. As an effort, you know, a question is, well, what else can we do besides? Question the superintendent. I think that's where you start.
Very good. Well, so we'll start down here with you. So you get the pick of.
So round two.
That round two, whoever you want to answer your question. Before you look at it.
Michael. Get you done, everyone, right? Define two aspects of effective county board, county superintendent relations.
Define.
Define two aspects of effective county board, county superintendent relations.
Well. For a board to be effective. I think come back to the last question, trust. And trust is. That they're doing this every single day and what's the board? We meet legally twice a month and then every, especially these. And the. With the superintendent being effective. That their daily job is to. Just make sure everything drives smoothly and then also. At the same time. Uh, look at infrastructure, transportation, food services, and then most of all academics. Uh, and then us as a board measure those academics. Uh, there's different metrics you can use, um, but at the end of the day, uh, we know to test work on everything. So it's hard to measure effective effectiveness most of the time. With uh. Goals that are like that, but. Uh, setting smart goals for superintendent board. Is the way to go and I believe we do a good job of the. Place passing the last three years of work.
Define two aspects. Define two aspects of effective county board, county superintendent relations. I think what is communication.
We're working together.
Yeah.
Arm examples of. Promoting bond. Yep, being on the same page.
So Howard, we have trust and run trust and smart goals and communication.
Uh, I agree with all of that and I think that, uh. The standard for that is being open and transparent, being able to. Um, respond when when an email or phone call comes in, answer the call, answer the email, which. I think you guys do when I call and I try to do that every time, um. Uh, when you reach out to me and I think that. You know, making sure that the information is out there. We do newsletters to try to stay in touch with each other, uh. And meeting. With the board president, um. You know, a couple of times a month to be able to make sure that we have items that need to be discussed. Properly outlined and. So we can address them at a board meeting. I I think that all those things. Make up the aspects of. County board. And superintendent relations.
Howard, I'm I'm coming up to give Damon his pick, but what would you add quickly to that?
I would add, um, I'm just thinking about this, um. You know, we're never fully developed. I'm sitting here at my age and I don't respond to some things as well as I used to, but. I still respond to good leaders, leadership. It brings out the best in me. We have a managing partner here at the law firm. I have colleagues. They they, my colleagues may not be my boss, but I consider them leaders and they bring out the best in me without compromising the best of the organization. And I've often thought that uh. School board members and superintendents don't arrive in those positions fully developed with no room for. Um, growth. And I think a a sign of an effective county board, county superintendent is where the board. Uh, leads the superintendent in bringing out the best in their superintendent without compromising the needs of the system. And the superintendent does the same thing with the board. And that involves the trust and the respect and the goals and the other things we've talked about. But I really think that it it's a win-win. It it uh allows the board and the superintendent, I think, in a, in a. An environment like that. To more predictably accomplish positive goals. In the end, it helps the school system and pulls everyone in the same direction. So I would say. Having a a personal ethic as a board member or a superintendent. Of bringing out the best in my counterparts and leading the school board.
Who would you pick, Damon, before you read your question?
I will pick Melissa. How should goals for the superintendent be developed? Should the board itself have certain goals? How should success be measured?
Together. Together. Yes. And who the heck knows? No, so how should the goal, how should the goals of the superintendent be developed? I, together, I mean, that's one of the things that that I have enjoyed about. This particular board that I'm only gonna be able to draw on on ours. This is the only board I've been a part of, um. Each of us have brought a goal to the table and each of us have have debated, even some of us have brought two to the table. We've debated on on which ones out of all of them that we've we've laid out are. Good, and some of them overlap, so we can incorporate, you know, two goals into one, um. And we as a board should have goals. The only way that we can improve as a board is to have goals. Um, we can have long-term goals and short-term, and I think, I think even individually, we should have them. I know I've done that for myself. Um, but that's, that's speaking to to, you know, individual preferences, um. How should success be measured? It depends upon. What the goal is specifically. So if we're measuring academic excellence, that's gonna be measured differently than. Um, whether or not, um. Uh, community awareness has has increased on what's going on in the schools. So there's, those are completely, there's your measure two completely different ways and that's where we again have to have conversations about how. We as a board are gonna rate what success looks like for that goal.
We also have to be mindful that sometimes. Uh, the goals that we set. Cannot be reached. Because of circumstances that. This area. Particularly. And that they could be ongoing.
Yes.
For next year or.
The only thing that I will add to that is we're talking about the measurement of goals. I I think that needs to be discussed in the beginning so everybody knows what's expected, what the expectations. Are of the goals, uh, because your interpretation of what. You mean by a goal could be interpreted differently by everybody at this table and. Uh, so discussing how it's going to be measured, I think is an important part of setting goals.
And another. Just looking back at the way we've worked together. Are you as a board setting the goal? Or are you the board and the superintendent negotiating the goal? Uh, which would you say? One of the good things that I see about this whole meeting is that senior staff is represented in the back, so they're hearing. The discussion, maybe getting some insight to. How we, we think. And uh. But the uh. If you're running, if if you try to sit there as a board. And say. Mr. Superintendent, you're gonna do this, this and this. You're not gonna have. The desire to do this, this and this, but if you have, if you have the negotiating process. Uh, and you understand where the board's coming from, we're representing the community. And where you're coming from, the superintendent, you're, you're the uh, the machine that's. You're, you're driving the machine basically. And we're, but both want to see our children succeeding. Uh, I I think. We as a board, and maybe some people will disagree with this, but I think as an elected official. We should negotiate. With the board. I also believe that we should be bargaining with the employees, but. But I'm not bringing that up here. No, I, it's not a false.
He didn't mean that.
I believe that, but I don't, but I, I, in this, to this question. If I'm sitting there as an employee being micromanaged or bossed around. I'm not gonna have my heart in it as much as I feel like I'm part of this process. I understand the goal. I share the goal. And and we'll work together to. To achieve the goal. I think the system would be far better served. With that type of board superintendent relationship. Than just simply saying one is the boss and the other is, is the rubber stamp. It's the other way that sometimes school boards are viewed as.
And and when I hear you say negotiating like that, I always think that that you're. Talking about collaborating and empowering so that there is that buy-in. Um, that, you know, comes with establishing those goals and the measurement of those goals and, you know, making sure that. That you are all moving in the right direction because you're right. If you just say do A, B and C. We might be able to do A, B and C, but if the heart's not in it, it won't be effective.
Sorry.
You know, I was just gonna say the goals also have to be reasonable and realistic. Not something so so far out there that.
And I, I think the legal. Legal part of this is they have to be mutually agreed upon goals, so. I I do think that's part of the discussion and the negotiation part of it and. Trying to take what this board's vision is for the, at least speaking for me, trying to take what this board's vision is for the county from our discussions. Um, and. Take the goals. That. We want and try to word them and make them so that they're measurable and appropriate. I think that, you know. It's a lengthy process for us to be able to do.
And Howard, can you talk just a little bit about the role of the um, goal setting and the evaluation for the superintendent, just the legal background? I think that Ron alluded to.
Yeah, and by the way, um. You can coincidentally get some credit towards your continuing education requirements with the state. There is a podcast. That Trey Marone. Um, anchored last year. I think some of you have seen it. It's two parts. On the very topic of the relationship between goals and the evaluation and the process by which it's conducted. And uh, it not only has raw information about that, but also. Some good ideas from one of the county boards that is generally commended for the way it conducts that process. But the um. That generally speaking, the only, you're only allowed to use one process to evaluate your superintendent by law. And that's the one that is is described in a state board policy as being a. A a a a procedure that's devised by the county board that meets certain criteria that are in the state board policy. And then that um. Evaluation process many years ago was submitted to the state and the state board had either approved it or sent it back for revision. And if you want to change it today, you have to send it back to the state board. But it it describes the areas in which the superintendent must be evaluated and may be evaluated and. They they tie into the goals, the goal setting, that it usually occurs in the fall of the year. Uh, or going into a new school year. So, you know, while we're. Thinking about the many different reasons that we would define something as a goal. Going into a year, we never want to lose sight of the fact that this is also something against which the superintendent's performance will be measured. And it doesn't have to be a goal that is, will be completed within the school year. But it can be a goal that requires certain progress uh during each year until it's reached. And I think when you think of it in that context, it's like, wh- where, where will we agree with the superintendent? The superintendent's time and effort should be concentrated. Um, to the extent choices have to be made between things coming into the superintendent's office and. Through the email and from the state legislature, from all the different other places that. The superintendent gets his or her assignments. Um, but you know, in the end, this is what we're gonna measure and. Um, I think when you talk about it that way, you see a more direct connection between. What the board and the superintendent aspire to do in the way of goals. And then the superintendent doing the superintendent's part. And then the superintendent doing the superintendent's part in, in seeing that that, that happens, and that we reached the, the ultimately reached the goal. And it's not something to, you know, we, we don't use it to load down a superintendent and say, let's see just how much we can crush. What load we can put on the superintendent's back before it breaks. And we don't go lightly and say, you know, Kim and I both knew somebody who helped us develop goals on a project once who said, let's put goals in here that we've already reached, so that at the end of the year, have complete success. It's somewhere between those two extremes. But when you think of this, okay, you hired the superintendent, you've got a contract with the superintendent, you're compensating the superintendent, all the employees and the school district answer to the superintendent. How are we going to harness that, that asset that we have i- in a way that, um, ultimately benefits the school district and reaches the goals that we as a board think are important?
Right, Pat?
I'll go ask Damon, just so he can see the question. Okay, why is the county superintendent required to make a recommendation about all personnel actions to be taken by the county board during a county board meeting?
I believe that's because we have to take action, so it's an action item, so. He makes the recommendation, then it's up to us to say yes or no.
It's in code, yeah.
He's recommending to us what employees, you know, not our employees.
And we do not have to vote in a, in a positive. We can reject, say, resubmit another recommendation. I guess we can say resubmit. Could he just bring, keep bringing back the same recommendation? We keep saying no, or does he have to come back with a different suggestion?
Well, it depends on what it is. Um, if, let's say you're hiring a, an English teacher at the high school and the superintendent brings you a recommendation to hire Sally Smith, the board rejects that, the board should say, and bring back another recommendation to us, which the superintendent has to do. Oftentimes, we see situations that inadvertently are put in limbo because a recommendation will be rejected. And the board won't say, tell us who's next, you know, bring us the next qualified person. And you'll see a, and, and issue arise in those situations. The superintendent could very well bring back the next person if you don't say, bring back the, the next candidate. Bring back another candidate for us. There are some situations that the board might reject the superintendent's recommendation. And it's too late to bring back anybody else. And right now, we're in personnel season. And the superintendent will be bringing to the board recommendations regarding transfers and non-renewals of contracts and termination of contracts. If the board rejects any one of those, there is no time to bring back another recommendation. You know, that is the recommendation that, that you all have before you. And this, this question kind of reminds me of a situation that we, uh, that Pat and I talked about last week regarding the role of the board in those, um, personnel recommendations. And the, the thought that, you know, wouldn't it be helpful if the board could come to the superintendent and say, really, we want you to cut in this area, in area A, not in area B. Let us look at your plan so we can give you an idea of what we might want to do. And I said, no, we, we can't do that. The recommendation of where to cut, where to transfer, who to hire, all of those things have to start with the superintendent and be presented or recommended to the board. And I think you'll even see on your agenda something that, that said, you know, I tried to put something on the board and Kim smacked my fingers, uh, and, and I did it, uh, but, but with, with good intentions. I mean, you know, trying to be helpful and trying to, um, take very seriously the board's role in making sure that we have a balanced budget and making sure that we're not over formula and making sure that, you know, we have the money to pay for all of the things that we want to pay. But it's a fine line, I think, between the boards accepting that recommendation or rejecting the recommendation and saying, I really wish we'd gone in a different direction. You know, and a lot of times what, what will happen is very, very early on in the process, when you first get your numbers that show that you're over the formula or you're, uh, you know, for two years now, the state superintendent's been telling us that we don't have any more COVID relief funds. And, and all those positions that were financed with COVID relief funds will no longer be financed that way. So you, boards are going to have to figure that out. In many instances, when the superintendent would bring that and say, we're, you know, fifty personnel over, boards might say, okay, we want you to start, you know, we want you to look at every aspect of the school system. You know, we hear from the county folks that you only cut in the high school or you only cut at the elementary school. We want to make sure that you look at everything. And then when the superintendent comes back with recommendations, they'll be prefaced with, we were this many people over, I want you to know, we've looked at everything. We've made sure that we can man the classrooms in our high schools and our elementary levels. We've met the ratios that we're required to do. We have those positions that are mandated by statute to have. So it's a difficult, a difficult situation, I think, for boards to be in. As Melissa said, you know, how do we stay in our own lane? And, and that's hard because, you know, your goals and the superintendent's goals align. And sometimes there's a tendency to say, this is how we think you ought to get to that goal, when really you're reacting to when it comes to you.
First, first, I want to say the envelope was not marked. And, and I appreciate him doing this, uh, to bring this point up. My concern was, when we see the list, the letters have already been sent, I'm assuming, the certified letters with the dates, with the deadlines and stuff. When we see the list on Monday, it'll be April the first. And so we are put in a position that I wanted tonight to at least see the, where the names are. And we say, well, not, not the names, the positions. I, I'm not, you're not, in my training the other Friday, it's not the names, it's the positions you're, you're looking at, uh, and not the personalities or that. But I wanted to let the board see where the positions were on the block. And if you had problems with, we had problems, we still had time to say today, we, we think you should go and look in these levels, areas, not just all in one area. And so we talked about that and we, that's why you have a baker's dozen here of thirteen questions because she agreed to, uh, insert this question to bring the point out, which I appreciate. But I just wanted to say that my purpose and my reason for that sentence here was, I wanted this board to say, well, look, you need to, you need to expand this list. You need to have some other levels in here. If, if we had a concern there, we won't be able to do that on Monday because like Kim said, I'm just going to say it, the budget has to be balanced. The people have to be changed, put on that list, the process has to go. And we will be, be beyond that point where we can say, go back and fall back and do it over again, because we won't. So we'll have to accept what the administration says on Monday. Otherwise, we'd be out of bounds there. Did I summarize that?
That, that's correct. And, and the reason for that is if, let's say, um, we, that you were provided a list of positions and my name was on that position, or I held the position, let's say I was a CTE director and the recommendation was to eliminate the CTE programs, so you would get rid of the CTE director. And seeing my name on there, I see, or seeing my position, I'm the only CTE director that you have. If the board looks at that before it's being presented by the superintendent and before I have the right to come to the board for a hearing, then our courts have considered that prejudgment. And they, they looked at it and they said, well, you know, if you've already looked at it and you've already talked about it and you've said, or you've said, let's eliminate the CTE program, I don't know why we need that. And then the recommendation comes and lo and behold, my position's on there. Then that's what the courts say we can't do, because that creates an issue. And that's why when it comes to you as a recommendation, you can say, you know, we didn't prejudge it, we, we didn't direct it. This was directed by the superintendent, working with the schools and working with the administration to determine how we were going to best live within our means. And that's why the recommendations are before you. So it protects the board and it protects the employees' rights that way.
Go ahead. You had a question and I have a question.
By the time it does get to us, even if we have a question or input that could have affected their decision, that they might not know, it's too late for us by that time.
That is correct.
Too late to give your opinion or share some light on something that they might not have any idea. And by the time April, Monday night gets here.
Right, and, and Howard, um, jump in at any time. I know that you can't see, so, you know, you're fine to, to jump in, but I think, Jackie, the, the point in all of that is that when the recommendation, that the recommendation comes to the board and then the board, if it believes that there's information that wasn't considered and should have been, or, you know, they didn't consider something that the board finds to be important, the board's response is to either vote it up and accept the recommendation and vote it down, with the understanding that if we vote down eliminating Kim's CTE position, then we're undoing all those dominoes. And Kim's going to go back into her job and the person that I bumped is going to go back into their job and, you know, on down the line. And it might not just be those two people. We might have to bring back a whole class of people that would be affected that way. So all of a sudden, in thinking, well, it's just one job, it turns out to be one job affecting one point five million dollars worth of your budget. And so I think that this is where that, you know, trust factor comes in. You all have established goals as a group that he wants to see accomplished and leave it in the superintendent's hands to bring recommendations to you in all aspects, whether it's personnel or budget or school closures and consolidations that best meet those goals. And, you know, it, it is a, it is a leap of faith oftentimes for boards to have that trust when they see a long list of names and, you know, there's a tendency, um, and, and Howard and I see it all the time. You'll have fifty names on that list and one person will come for a hearing in front of the board. And they have a pitiful story. And, you know, you feel so bad for them that you acquiesce and you don't accept the recommendation on that, that one person that comes before the board. And that's that one point five million dollar decision. And then the next year, you have forty-nine people coming before the board for hearings, because word gets out that all you have to do is be the squeaky wheel. And so, you know, I think that when employees do come before the board, it's very important for the board to listen and to ask questions of the employees and ask questions of the administration. So that you know, if they took time out of their schedule to come before you for a hearing in a, in a process that's, that's very rote, uh, you know, and, and who goes where and how we eliminate this teaching position where I'm going to bump, that, that's very, very rote. It, it's a precise formula that we can stick that in. And if someone comes before the board, they're clearly concerned about it. And, and you should be too, to determine whether the process was followed and whether as a board, that's what you want to do. But, um, it's not the time, I think, for second guessing should be eliminating over here or over here section. And Howard, do you have?
Yeah, just, just two points to kind of close off this piece of it. There's not a teacher that, that teaches for us, a bus operator who operates a bus, a school board member, a superintendent, school attorneys, who don't look at some of the stuff the law requires us to do or prohibits us to do or requires us to do a certain way and say, that doesn't make any sense, or this could be, this could be done better. Why are we operating with our hands tied behind our back? There's all kinds of reasons, uh, for that, but the fact is that just like in filling vacancies, you can't just haul off as a board and hire anybody you want to or just any of the applicants. You got to wait for a superintendent's recommendation. And you can't tell the superintendent how to make that recommendation. There are cases that undo hiring decisions on that basis. It's a soup, it's called a bifurcated process. A superintendent makes his or her recommendation all by themselves. The legislature has told them to do that. And then they said, bring it to the board, and then the board acts on it, votes it up or down. And if, if it's voted down, then in some cases, the superintendent must come back with another name. And there, there are various places in the law that for reasons that may even be lost to memory, the legislature's decided, huh-uh, this decision is the superintendent's, or huh-uh, this decision's the board. And in some cases, it's a bifurcated process. Our job as school board members and superintendents and public employees is to follow the law, as frustrating as it can get. Now, what the courts have said in this area we're talking about is that the legislature has guaranteed every employee who's going to be recommended for transfer as part of personnel season, or it's going to be recommended their contract be terminated or non-renewed, or that their contract be modified. In every one of those instances, the legislature has said, you cannot do anything without the superintendent's recommendation. Just as in filling vacancies, once the superintendent makes the recommendation, then you spring into action. And you can demand information and you can ultimately make a decision. But an important piece of that is, the legislature has said, every employee has a right to be heard by the board about the superintendent's recommendation before the superintendent makes a decision. And what we've learned from some Supreme Court cases in West Virginia, as well as lower courts in the grievance board, is that if they get a whiff that this wasn't a fair hearing, then they may well overturn what you did. And of course, our job as attorneys is to help uphold your decisions as a board. And what they say is that if you've already sealed a person's fate or you've taken steps that result in what's about to happen to them, then this hearing is a sham. You've already decided you're not going to cut this program, and so it necessarily cuts my program. At a hearing, I'm allowed to argue, you're cutting the wrong program, you're reducing the wrong number of people in this program, you're moving people to the wrong locations for educational reasons or financial reasons, or because my seniority isn't what you think it is, a mistake's been made. I've got all those arguments open to me. And, and you as a board have to base your decision on the evidence that comes in at the hearing and be completely open-minded when you do it. And it's a bit dramatic, but just think if, if you were charged with murder and you get before the judge and you find out that someone else was suspected of doing it, but the judge said, no, bring me someone else, and so they brought you there. And that would be the most unfair trial we've ever heard of. Or if a judge actually said indict Howard, I think he did it. And then you get in front of the judge and the jury supposedly to have a fair trial. Now, it's not that dramatic, yeah, what we're talking about. It isn't, you know, you're not talking about doing things that are just, um, unreasonable. But for whatever reason, the legislature has entitled these people to a fair hearing. And it has also said, you can't act until the superintendent acts. And how the superintendent generates their recommendation is their business. And whether you accept it or not, uh, is yours. You all who have commented on this point out something that's a reality. By the time this gets in front of you, it's too late for a redo or a do-over. Because there are deadlines in the law. One of them is April first. Anybody that's going to be recommended for transfer has to get a letter before that date. You know, hearings have to be held and all before you decide the case. And, and you have to make your, all your decisions on or before May the first. I think it's a Hobson's choice. It's not really a choice. Uh, you know, I've used that term from time to time. I looked it up once and it turns out that Mr. Hobson owned a, a, a stable in London back in the eighteen hundreds. And his rule that he had written down on the stable door was, you have to either take the horse nearest the stable door or no horse at all. So when you needed to go someplace, your choice was to take the horse by the door or, or you can't have one. Well, that's no choice. You got to take the one by the door. So, um, that's, and this is a bit of a Hobson's choice. And that doesn't mean that, that the employees can't score points at a hearing and cause you to realize a mistake's been made occasionally. In some rea- weird situations, which I would not rely on, there can be a little bit of a redo with respect to employees who have probationary contracts and are not recommended to come back next year. There's a process that can actually occur. employees who have probationary contracts and are not recommended to come back next year. There's a process that can actually occur after May the first to uh, put people on that list that's not gonna get a contract for next year. But um, for everything else, you, it is a Hobson's choice, but it's like the frustration we feel with so many things in education law, and I go back to filling vacancies and having to act only on the superintendent's recommendation. You know, I've been with a board that would, that rejected the superintendent's recommendation for an administrative position at the central office and the superintendent came back with another name. They rejected that one, came back with the third one, they rejected that one. Came back with the fourth one, they accepted that one. And some grievances were filed over it and all and, and it was a mess, but the, the frustration of the board was really evident there. And the, and the, the confidence of the superintendent that this fourth person wasn't the most qualified, the second most qualified or the third most qualified. And they're just not a very nice way to work it all out or a way that makes sense, but I think it's a Hobson's choice in most cases. And I, and I, and I, I put it on the statutes that were required to follow through this whole process.
I think Damon, you had a question.
Yeah, my, my only question, I'm keeping, really brief. Um, is there any way that we as a board can require that the recommendations be provided at a certain period of time before the deadline? Like, not, not talking about this year, just thinking about future years, like, for example, this year, April first, we say it's on first meeting in March to have it presented. Because that way we don't get stuck with this. I'm not saying it's a bad choice, it's like, it's like if you it's like if you get stuck with the, the bad, with the lemon, that you like, oh, if, if you would've, we would've been able to check out the car beforehand. Like he said, like with the horse situation. So we don't get stuck with that, you know, that, that horse could be lame. Take your quarter mile and it dies and it's like, oh, that's all right.
An affected employee will say at their hearing, uh, in court or the grievance board, there's evidence here that the board members got a list of the people that are gonna be recommended for transfer, termination or non-renewal back in March.
I, I don't mean it like that. What I mean is like, for example, the list that we're gonna give on Monday.
And I don't, I'm not sure that you're gonna get a list on Monday. I think Monday, April first is the deadline for the employees getting their transfer letters. And then you'll get the, you'll actually get the list in honor before May first, but by the time Monday rolls around, no one else is gonna be able to get a letter, so.
Okay, okay, now I see. Okay.
And, and just ki- kind of piggybacking on um, what Mr. Wright was talking about, my question is more of is there a way without dictating to the superintendent? Um, is there a way that we can have a conversation with the superintendent just to gather some thoughts? Like, is it going to be, um, you know, we need to trim down in all areas of administration? Or do we need to trim down in all areas of, of, you know, teacher aides or whatever that idea is, where there, where we're not given specific names, we're not given specific schools or positions or anything like that, but areas where, where there's, there could be a focus because there's some years where, you know, we might have really high, you know, attendance of nineteen thousand, twenty thousand students. And then who knows in five years, we might only have ten thousand students. I'm not saying that that's gonna happen. I don't think that will. But I, but to give that example of ebbs and flows, things that can change over the course of years, like is there a way that we can have a conversation with them or her?
Well, and, and I'll answer Howard and then um, you answer. I, I think that in very broad general terms, well before personnel season begins, like when you get those second month numbers, where you get your COVID numbers and you see um, that you're over. I think that the board can say, um, you know, we, we know that we're gonna have to pay for fifty positions that are over the formula so that we can properly staff our schools. But we also know that, that we're not gonna have the money because we're over the formula.
Right.
Um, we would like for you to go through and make sure that we are at the bare minimum that we have to be in terms of administrators in the administrative ranks. Um, and if the superintendent comes back and and gives you a list of ten administrators that have been cut, gives you ten, a list of ten administrators when it comes time to do that. If the superintendent comes back and doesn't give any administrators that were cut, then the superintendent explains, you know, I, I looked and I made sure these are the, the number of administrators that we have to have. I think where we get in trouble is when we look at it and say, um, you know, gosh, I think we have too many assistant principals. We only have, wanna have one assistant principal at each school. Then you're directing
Right, right.
the superintendent in a, in a course that has to be the recommendation from the superintendent. But I, I, I think that that's where you at least have a little bit of input. But I think even then, whether it's April first or March first or November first, you can't say to the superintendent very specifically, we want you to cut two positions out of the central office, or we want you to cut, um, you know, the full-time attendance director and the full-time transportation director. I mean, you can't direct the superintendent what to do.
Right. I was just trying to figure out, can we ask questions?
Yeah.
I think you can ask in a feedback, an idea of.
In fact, goes along with what we have always discussed about the FEDS funding. I mean, what we said, those positions won't need to be cut or transfer or absorb some way. I mean, we had that discussion.
We had.
They want, so that kind of discussion, I would think that you would definitely have, which we have.
But that, that's, that's one of the concerns. When, when we are, when we are getting that, all that money in from the feds growing and we, we were telling the, I mean, the people were they didn't realize that, you know, there's the finite amount of money here. But at the same time, I plotted FY twenty and twenty-one and twenty-two. And we saw a dramatic increase in the number of coordinators, directors in some of these uh, codes, one oh seven, one oh six, I forget what they were. And, and they were growing at the same time. But now that the money's running, we don't see the I, I always use the example, the person who's leading should go through the chow line after his subordinates have gone through the chow. And I know they get sick of hearing that, but that's just an old military thing that I was trained and taught to do in, in leadership. And so we, we had, we had all these positions being increased, but then but then we also had these other things, you know, I mean, some of them were grants and things, but, but we saw the growth there. Now, we're cutting, we don't know, we, we haven't seen a list first. But we'll be cutting. And if we're cutting at the bottom, where the people are working with the children and the people who are up, up higher in the strata of the system, and there's not cuts there. It's demoralizing and it, it's an elected official. And I know I'm supposed to make tough decisions, but I don't think it's fair to the people who are down here being cut if they don't see that the, the cuts are going systematically all the top of the bar. And, and that's, and there was growth in those areas. Now, was it FEDS money? I don't know. But there was growth. And that, and that's, that's difficult as well. When you're forced to make one of the the ho- the horse at the gate coots there.
Well, that's right. And I think those are those difficult decisions. And those are the questions that you ask, you know, what have we, what have we done in all of this? And I think we're coming to our time quickly.
Yeah.
Yes, Howard.
Uh, let me ask a question of Ron. Did what Pat just say surprise you?
Did that surprise me? No.
No, you, you knew he felt that way, right?
Absolutely.
I think a sign of a healthy board is one where we don't need I'll use micromanagement loosely here. Um, we don't need to manage the superintendent's recommendations here in order to inform him what's important to us, whether we think we should cut at the bottom or the top, whether we should have a welding program at the VOTEC school, whether reading's important, whether we should find another way to hire these people that were funded by ESRS in the future because we like what they're doing. I would hope that in the process of goal setting in the fall and in your ongoing communications with each other as a board, incident to the budget and other things that um, to have, if the law were to be changed to give the board a meeting where they can make all their views known about this before the superintendent comes back with recommendations, I would hope that there'd be nothing of consequence set in that meeting that a good superintendent with healthy relationships with the board and vice versa wouldn't already know. And we know that different board members have different views of things, that this is important to the, a large part of the board, this must be important to all of them because it's in my goals, et cetera, et cetera. And uh, uh, the type of input that the law we fear and we've learned from some cases, doesn't allow the board to give to in detail or even in generalities in some cases. We had a board that got in trouble because they, in their bud- preliminary budget discussions, they decided there weren't enough kids in the welding program and they didn't put any money in the budget for it. And then it, but what a surprise, they turned around and put the, the welding instructors on on termination. They got their jobs back because it was found that that was prejudgment. I would think the board and the superintendent through the goal-setting process and through all the other communications you have, if they have a good relationship, would already know what these dynamics are. And sometimes we have five different ones from the board members, sometimes they're unanimous. Uh, so I, I, I would, I would encourage people to think of that as maybe a way to come closer to this goal we're talking about, which we all understand. But the law shackles us in some regards. It might be one way to do it without running afoul of the employee's right to a fair hearing.
Jackie, I think your question is.
Grant this to Mr. Murphy in two minutes or less with the answer.
That's not part of which one that.
Oh, it is.
Can one county board member's actions define the entire county board?
Pardon me? Read it again?
I don't have my hearing going.
Can one county board member's actions define the entire county board? Question one. What does the state law say about board corporate decision-making?
Second one, I, 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 I know that your actions are only covered corporately when all five of you are involved in the decision. So read your first part again.
Can one county board member's actions define the entire county board?
Well, define means portray to the community what's going on. Yes, if you have, if you have one board member who's doing things that are detrimental and the other board members don't challenge it, uh, and it's, it's done, it's done outside the confines of the board. You, you could uh, it, it could, it could harm the image of your board if, if that's the thing, but the key, the key point is, is that we as individuals, we talked about earlier in two minutes and thirty seconds, uh, we, we hit upon the point that outside of this table, presence of a majority of the five with superintendent staff present or from the executive session without the superintendent, that's the only time we are a legitimate body.
Well, it could be diverse, could be something positive in communication, so it wouldn't have to be a negative.
Yeah.
Well, but, but you, you have to, you have to be careful that what you do out in the community reflects the.
Right, right.
Well, and you have to be sure that one board member of the community doesn't have one board member as the board.
Yeah, yeah. But if one board member has two other belts, they back up.
But that board member wouldn't know because that board member's not discussed anything outside of a board meeting. Correct?
Yeah, that was the first question.
Well, that's right. Michael, it's your turn. Jackie, you haven't had your second question.
Oh. What does the state law?
So can a county board direct the county superintendent to take a certain course of action? After all, the county superintendent works in place for the county board.
I think we've hammered that one.
Well, he works for us, so we don't have to have to take a certain form of action, hopefully. Correct?
Well, we can't, we can't direct him to say fire this person or reduce this.
We can suggest that he this is what we would like him to do. We, we would, we know, no, no, you can't do that.
That's Jackie, that's not.
Exactly, that's Jackie. My eye works up. I know that's how you work, but that's not how the board works. I think one of the things we've had, we've had conversations about this before is um, we can, we can work within the confines of, of goals at the beginning of the year to help not get what we want, but resolve an issue that we might see coming on the horizon based on some information we, we hear. So if we know that there's a concern coming up for, um, I'm going to use an example, this is not something that is currently going on in Berkeley County that I'm aware of, so please, anybody listening, um, a hypothetical would be if we know of a, a principal that's having an issue. We might instead of directing anything towards principals, what we might be able to do is in in his, in the superintendent goals is talk about how to develop leadership within the county. That would be a way that we can kind of navigate that a little bit so that we can assist our existing principals, but also help that one particular principal that might be having a little bit more struggles. But then gives us the ability to keep our thumb on the pulse, so to speak.
My interpretation of that is that you could have a.
Your interpretation of that.
See what Kim says. You can have a frank conversation with the superintendent regarding a specific issue. And hopefully that, um, you can talk about it and he can, and he can share with you his concerns if, if we're, we have our finger on the pulse or no, it's not wrong.
Yeah.
Well, I think if, like say for instance, or like, I'll use Melissa's example, there's an issue with a principal at school. My thing is I would say, Mr. Superintendent, I've heard that there's this particular issue happening at school, can you check it out? And that's it.
True. True, but my only snag is, true, but what if it's not working? Whatever behaviors we saw before, we told the superintendent, we're still seeing just because we go in and visit, we do have the conversations and it's and we do stop people from talking too much to us for the sake of potentially having a hearing. If we're still seeing that, but then even, I'll even go a, a stretch further. What if another school pops up? Another principal has an issue, then you've got two. And that might mean you just need a little, you, everybody just might need a little bit of help.
Well, some professional development.
Let me ask you this.
But that's his decision, that's not us. Okay.
We are, we're getting into being investigators there. We have to be careful there, but could the board say, Mr. Superintendent, you need to get some more of your upper echelon staff out in the schools? Say, three days a week, you're out there monitoring these schools. Oh, it's not just this school. Can our, is the board, is that a policy decision that you're, you're setting? Cause I know in the past you told us, we can't do personnel, that we can do policy. So if you're trying to get people out and seeing what's going on who are in management, could we just say Mr. Superintendent, you decide where they go, but we wanna see people out in the schools monitoring what's going on and seeing.
I think this is the way I would tie all of this together. I think that Damon, you are correct. You know, John, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm finding it all together. Everybody's gonna get a gold star. That's right. So, so you are correct. If, if you hear you're out in a school and you see something that doesn't look right or you hear something, then it's go to the superintendent. This is, this is a problem. We want you to, you know, want you to know about it. I'm out.
I think we all do that.
Yeah. And, and I think that Melissa, when you say, well, what if it pops up at another school? I think that's when we go to the superintendent, whether it's in the goals or otherwise, and say, you know, we're hearing a lot of grumblings from people. Is there a leadership issue in our administrators? we're hearing a lot of grumblings from people, is there a leadership issue in our administrators? Can you address that? And then the superintendent figures out the best way to address that. Maybe it's sending people out, you know, every day into the schools. Maybe it's concentrating on a particular school, maybe it's, you know, having professional development for everybody to come in. And that's the way you weave all of those things in. And then ultimately, if those goals aren't being met and if you're not seeing the, you know, people coming together and administrators doing what they suppose, they're supposed to, then you go back to the superintendent and say, you know, what you're doing isn't working, we're still hearing the grumblings. There are so many things that happen that the board just can't know anything about. That that principal at the first school that Damon saw was having an issue may be on a corrective action plan and we can't know anything about that. And it could be that the second principal um used to be an assistant principal for that one and learned some bad habits and all of a sudden she needs to be on a corrective action plan. Um, so there are all kinds of things that are going on and just funneling it down to the superintendent, this is what we're seeing. You take care of it is the way to address that, uh, because you you can't, I think you can tell the superintendent if you have a concern and tell the superintendent what you are seeing or what you're hearing, but you can't say, I'm hearing bad things about this principal, you need to fire that person, you know, you need to get rid of them. That that crosses the line with that. Howard, would you disagree?
No, I think it's well said.
We have three questions left and five board members. Um, some of them we have already um talked about or or beaten, I think, as as we may have said. Um, and so I will, I will leave, I will read the last one that I think we haven't covered. Um, and then just have you all answer it as we go through. And and I'm going to start with the superintendent for this one, not to put you on the spot. But the state law defines the county superintendent as the CEO, the chief executive officer of the county board. Explain what you think is involved by the county superintendent being the CEO? And how does the CEO designation enhance or limit the role of the county board? So what does it mean to you, Ron, to be the CEO? And how does that affect the board?
Well, the chief executive officer for Berkeley County Schools is a big job. Um, and I think the role of the CEO is to understand where you come from. And that is from five members of the board um selected you for whatever the reasons were. And you've got to communicate with them to find out what what their vision of what the school system should look like. Um, you can't change the cards that you're dealt, you know, quickly. Uh, it's like turning a ship in the middle of an ocean or in the harbor near Baltimore, apparently. Um, so it is something that takes, that takes time. But you've got to make sure that you communicate, keep everybody in the loop. Um, you're open to, open to, to communication, criticism, uh, you know, at times. Um, and to try to take the vision of what board communicates and to make Berkeley County run uh efficiently. And again, it's a, it's a large place. Keep in mind, there are five board members for the smallest school district in the state of West Virginia, which has less people in it than one of our intermediate schools. Um, so it, it's a, it's a tall task for the five of them and it's a tall task for me and we have to work together. But my role is to take what their vision of it is from, from the beginning and try to incorporate that as as best we can. There's a lot of, a lot of things that are going to happen throughout a a day, throughout the year. Um, and we're not going to be able to cover everything all at one time. But, you know, working together, you should be able to do that.
Board members?
Well, I think you define it very well. I I also see the CEO as uh delegating the staff underneath him, ensure that um what he envisions and is, and what the board envisions with him uh is followed through. And if that's not the case, then to make corrective changes, um, and not just underneath him, but I'm talking about in town and field, just like with uh renovations that eventually will come back to us. So I think it's a big, huge job in this county and it's hard to oversee every day. And it's a big job, is all I'm gonna say.
Repeat, repeat question.
State law defines the county superintendent as the chief executive officer, the CEO of the board. Explain what you think is involved by the county superintendent being the CEO? And secondly, how does that designation enhance or limit the role of the county board?
Well, other places in the statute, where first offhand, it clearly protects the county from having board members elected to get into person, you know, hiring buddies and cronies like some parts of the state. So um it's, it's, that, that's one area that we've defined, but but the the constitution says where the state must provide a thorough and efficient education. Constitution also says counties will have superintents, statutes only say you have five board members. And uh, if some boards think that their only job is to hire a superintendent, then switch it over into auto, auto politic. But the statute also says the key thing that you super, uh, evaluate superintendent on, I think, is academics. Am I right? I mean.
Achieve.
Achieve academic, student achievement. So that's, that's a key factor that I think sometimes in the bigness of the system we lose track of is the academic achievement itself is correct. Um, to to see that stunt. And that's where I think another major role of the board is is not only to pick a superintendent, but to make sure the academics are occurring in your school system. And but there are, there are a whole array of other issues. One of the things we didn't talk about here was the relationship between the board president and the superintendent. I know we work on the agenda, but that's kind of loose, what what those parameters are. And but that, that was just something that came to my mind. But I, I think what has been said previously, but I ended it there.
Anyone else?
Good answers.
Do you feel professionally developed after this session? Learned some new things, um reinforce uh things that you already knew.
I think my mind's been taxed.
There you go. Howard, do you have any last words of wisdom for us this evening?
No, I had very few and I've already emptied them out.
Well, thank you all very much and kudos to Howard on call for an exercise that gets us thinking uh about our role and responsibilities and what to do. Thank you all for being such good board members and good sports this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Um, we now have uh item four point one. We have a civil action case, C C O two two oh two four dash C dash one sixty-nine, I'm renumbering. And uh, we're entertained uh a motion to go into executive such, executive session under section code six nine eight four.
So moved.
Okay, uh, any, uh, can have discussions. All those in favor, say if I was saying that.
Aye.
Those nay, motion carries. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Martin and Ms. Long will make the motion to uh adjourn the meeting when we're finished, so I don't want to tie up everybody for that. And we will announce the time with Mr. Stevens himself. All right, do I have, who made the motion?
I'd like to really exit for.
We don't have a lot of valid discussions.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Martin and seconded by Ms. Long at four fifty eight.
Seven fifty eight.
Seven fifty eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Those nay, motion carries. Thank you all.